Good evening and welcome to the Portland City Council Meeting for June 26, 2018. Please stand and join me in the presence of the Lord's Prayer and the hymn of the Women who have served overseas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our hearts and heaven, our hope and longing, I keep them come, but I will give them a hundred questions in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us not our trespasses, and to be forgiven those who have sinned against us, and leave us not in temptation, but the one that shall be revealed. God is the King of power, and we will wait long in the name of our Lord and His Prayer.
Thank you. Let me please call the roll.
Dave Gilman?
Here.
Jill Freeman?
Present.
Beth Gilman?
Present.
Roseanne Hickman?
Here.
Brian Hill?
Here.
Margaret Phillips?
Here.
Lisa Sardi?
Present.
Thank you. Council, you've all received, and I believe in front of you you have hard copies of council meeting minutes for May 22, June 12, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, is there a second?
I don't have a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the meeting minutes are approved. Share notes and certification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. We have one desk presentation tonight, Mr. Mike Snyder, speak about the Fourth of July events here in Portland.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, welcome. Thank you, members of council, the same as opposed.
Citizens.
Veterans Day is a day set aside every year to give thanks for those who have served, and of course Memorial Day is a day set aside to remember those that gave the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. And the Fourth of July is a day to celebrate those freedoms that we enjoy as Americans. In a rather famous letter that Abigail Adams received from her husband, John Adams, he wrote, "I am apt to believe that it," in reference to Independence Day, "will be celebrated by succeeding generations as a great anniversary festival. It ought to be commemorated as a day of deliverance by solemn acts of devotion to God Almighty. It ought to be solemnized with pomp and parade, with schwees, games, sports, guns, bells, bonfires, and illuminations from one end of this continent to the other, from this day forward forevermore." It's pretty powerful stuff. And it's with that paragraph that our committee for the past decade or so has been planning the Fourth of July celebration here in the city of Portland, and it wouldn't be possible without the acts of council and the generous contribution of $2,000 every year. Let's see if we can do 2,500 next year, but thank you, little table we get, I appreciate it. I want to recognize the members of our committee who literally work year-round, where we have already begun thoughts and ideas for next year's Independence Day celebration here in town. Gregyn Carroll Fox, Annie and Amy Drummer, Kim Stadlack, Heather Isbell, Kenny Holcomb, Debbie Pesker, Pat Hatfield, Paul Schleck, Roseanne Hickman, and the women of the Portland Women's Club, Pastor Bruce, Bachelor Glazer won't even be in town this year, and Pastor Jim Layman. And as you can see in front of you, I have the itinerary of the events that are taking place throughout the Fourth of July, and actually we've expanded it to include this Friday as well, with a Battle of the Bands event at Lakeview Park. If you want to put a band together with a couple kazoo's and a ukulele, chances are you're going to win, because nobody else has signed up for that yet. So, you know, if you want to do that, we'll extend the deadline. But as you see on the Fourth of July, the day begins with the Squirt Gun Run, 5K, hosted by the Portland Women's Club. If you would like to volunteer to stand on the sidelines to throw water balloons or squirt gun runners as they go by, give Mrs. Hickman a phone call or an email or a tweet, and she'll be happy to help you out there. We then move over to St. John Lutheran Church on Adams Street for the Firecracker Cutie Contest. Last year we expanded it to more than just kids, it now includes a Miss and a Mrs., unlimited age group. So, Edna, you want to join that cutie contest?
Not really.
We also have running in conjunction with that, the Ice Cream, Hot Dog, Apple Pie, and Pizza Social. That's one of the big fundraisers for the day, that'll be set up in the front lawn, the boulevard of St. John Lutheran Church, going on as the car show goes on, which leads us to the next thing, the Classic Car Show. If you have a classic car or other, there is the application inside your pamphlet, fill that out and get that in, there's a nominal $5 entry fee, which again helps fund next year's activities. The Voices of Freedom Concert, that has been one of the most popular things aside from the fireworks that takes place on the Fourth of July. This is a group of volunteers, a lot of choir folks from various churches. Mr. Noder has participated in past years, he's got a great voice. They've been practicing for about two months, leading up to the concert at Trinity Methodist Church at 7:00. They also perform around the Christmas time, they've expanded their activities. After the concert, activities move over to Waterworks Park, the Family Dance Party with DJ Von Ryder, former policeman. He'll be, I want to say spinning the ones and twos, but pushing buttons on his digital computer to get the music playing, starting about 8:00, leading up to, of course, the Gala Fireworks Display. That will go off at 10:00 at night, set your, to the cell phones, so everybody has the same time on the cellphone, at 10:00, that'll go out. I would ask, and I know none of you in this room would do this, but I'd ask that you pass this word along, check our Facebook page and other Facebook postings, do not, please, 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 please do not call the police department if there's inclement weather to ask, "Are there fireworks tonight?" Check the Facebook, the police are too busy, they will go off sometime, the night of the Fourth, maybe early on the Fifth, but they, I've been assured by the fire chief, they will go off that night. Altogether, we've generated just over $10,000 to make these events happen, the fireworks display itself is $8,000 of that. Next year, we have a goal of maybe upping the fireworks another thousand or so to get a little bit longer show for everybody. And other than the contribution from the city council, everything else is raised through beg, borrow, donations, Bucks for Booms containers, there'll be youth from the baseball, youth baseball league walking through the crowd with Bucks for Booms buckets, asking for donations, so anything you can do to help us out as individuals would be greatly appreciated. You can drop off checks to the Portland Chamber of Commerce, make the check payable to Portland Chamber of Commerce Foundation in the memo section of the check write fireworks, so it gets to the right account. But everything you need is right in this handy dandy packet, for those of you who arrive later, there's some additional packets here at the counter, please pass those around, share them, posters are up around town. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Please be safe on the Fourth of July, we go to a lot of work, so please don't be silly and do something goofy in your backyard and lose an arm.
Council, any council comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
We hope to see you all on the 5K run. I'll be driving her out. Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. You're a sight for sore eyes, good to see you here.
Thank you.
We need to public comment, I believe we have just one public comment, Ms. Sherry Orphea of the Avenue.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Hi. You stand up here, or there, or here, where, anywhere?
You can, anywhere.
All right. With the recent rain that we just had, obviously that's what brought me here tonight. Who am I directing, everybody listen to me, or do I just talk what I want to say?
Yeah, you have five minutes or more.
Okay.
I'm sure they will, and everyone here can listen to you.
Okay, so...
Folks from the work here in City Hall and the elected city council.
Okay, so, when it's raining and our street floods, where's that water supposed to drain besides my family room?
Well, the water drains the storm, the storm system.
Which is where?
It's in the street, I'm not exactly sure where we live on, but that's where it's located.
Okay, so, why does that street continually flood? I mean, if it rains tonight, I'm going to guarantee it's going to flood, okay? I know we had excessive rain that day that had the whole town flooded, but this has been a continual problem for the last 20 years for me, okay? There's nothing more that I can do to my home, okay? I've done everything that every safety service director's told me to do, and the water still comes in. Okay, now I was told it's supposed to drain in that pond in the back there by Taff Till. Is that full, need to be cleaned out, or?
We had to pump that out, it was so full, and there was nowhere for the water to go. The lake is currently 65 inches over data.
Okay, is that, is that the homeowner's problem that I guess I don't...
No, I think you would have to speak to God about that.
Okay. Beth, really, I'm talking to you, okay?
And I'm answering your question.
Okay, because I can't do anything more to my home, okay? I've paid $6,000 for the drain that they told me I need, that didn't work. I've got four sump pumps underneath my house, which two of them blew right out of the wall, and the water just poured in my house because the water was so slow.
Where are those pumping to, ma'am? Where do your sump pumps pump?
I have no idea, I didn't put them in.
Well, I would suggest that you figure out where they're pumping to, and that they're actually pumping out, because if they blew out, that would indicate to me that they backed up.
How can they pump out when the water's in the street?
I don't know.
When the water's in the street?
You don't even know where they're pumping to.
Okay, so I'll find that out, you tell me why the water keeps backing up in my family room.
I'd be happy to work with you, there's no need to raise your voice or yell at me, I'm not familiar with even where your home is located exactly, I don't know the number, I heard that you're on B, I have an idea of where you're at in relation to the pond that I know we pumped out, we have pumped out, we've even pumped it out in preparation for nor'easters and rainstorms.
This happens every single time a rain, it doesn't have to be...
I can't change the past, I can help you try to work towards the future, and I'm more than happy to do that.
That's what I'm wanting, that's what I, that's what I want.
I'd be more than happy to do that. We're going to have to talk at some point and figure out why those blew out, there was nowhere for the water to go. I'm terribly sorry that you had that problem, I'm terribly sorry that anyone had flooded.
I'm sure you are, I mean, I am too. I mean, I know my home wasn't the only home that got flooded on that street or in the city, but I can't do anymore to my house to keep the city's water out of it, is what I'm...
Well, the first is, we need to figure out where you're pumping to.
Well, that house was built, I don't know how long ago, but the sump pumps were underneath that house when I bought it, I just had them all replaced, okay, so that they were new.
Again, if we don't know where you're pumping water to, and you expect it to actually pump water out, we need to know where it's pumping to. If they backed up enough that it blew them out, it would lead me to believe that your sump pumps don't work properly.
So you're going to tell me my sump pumps haven't flooded?
I'm only saying it would lead me to believe that your pumps weren't functioning properly, I'm not telling you anything.
So for the last 20 years, the sump pumps haven't worked properly?
I'm telling you that on that night, on Tuesday night, when we had record amount of flooding, the water obviously couldn't go anywhere, and that caused your pumps to fail.
So back to my original question, when's the last time that pond in the back there was cleaned out?
Well, I can tell you that it was pumped out that night, it was pumped out the following day, we pumped water out of it, we pumped water out of it...
Well, you probably didn't have a choice to pump it out, right, because it was too full, but maybe if you cleaned it out, it could hold more water off of our street so that our street can drain into it better?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'd be happy to talk to you about that in another form, where you can give suggestions if you think that that's what it takes.
Well, no, I...
We're managing, we are managing an entire city, I don't know what to tell you about the pond.
Nobody, nobody can ever, nobody ever has an answer.
Again, I can't answer for the past, I'll answer for today and the future, and I can tell you that, I know what we're doing with the pond, and I know that we have pumped it out, so that if more rain comes, we have somewhere for water to go near your home.
I mean, why, I guess I don't understand this at all, why is it my issue to keep the city's water out of my family room? I, 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 I'm lost for words on that, I shouldn't have to worry, when it rains in this town here, I should not have to worry whether that water's coming in my shower, or up my toilet, or up my drain in my laundry room. Should I?
I wouldn't disagree with you, I'd be frustrated too, but the first thing I would do is make sure that my system inside my home is functioning properly, and that's what we need to do first.
Who's going to do that?
You will.
So I'm going to put more money into keeping your guys' water out? Basically.
We will work with you as best that we can.
I mean, I...
As we work with every other homeowner, resident of the city who experiences high water and flooding.
I mean, I have been dealing with this for 20 years.
I understand, you've been dealing with it for 20 years, but you don't even know what the condition of your system is, or where it's pumping to.
I know that it was just replaced, okay, so...
The pumps were replaced, but you don't know where you're pumping to.
Right, well...
We need to, we need to look at that, we will help you get it looked at.
That's fine, but what about the street? My house isn't the only house, I'm curious about my house.
We have 26 some miles of streets in the city that need attention. We have storm system, drain system that needs attention, we have separate, we have a combined system in areas that is going to need to be separated. There are many issues that have gone unaddressed for many years, that we are looking at and trying to figure out how we can best tackle that, including trying to figure out the worst streets, the best streets, and how do we allocate our resources to do that? There are projects underway to do that, we're hoping to put together a long-range plan that we can tackle that. In the meantime, we all have to do everything that we can to avoid situations like you had the other day.
I mean, I can't do anything, I mean, I can't do anything more besides back a cement truck up there and fill in my family room, can I, to stop the water from coming in?
I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, here's the other thing that the past mayor told me, do all those, those big drainage things, are they all up and running? Because he told me a long time ago that when we're getting these big amounts of rain, that they shut some of them off over here to clear the main streets off.
That's not accurate, and that may have been accurate in the past, I can tell you that that's not how, what happened last Tuesday, every pump functioned the way it was designed and pumped, as soon as they kicked on.
Is that really...
They automatically kicked on, were notified, we had personnel who were out within 20 minutes of the torrential rains that started, 20 minutes after the last council meeting that we had. I was at Perry and Monroe, and we already had a floodwater, within 20 minutes of the start of that rain. By midnight, that rain started sometime around 9:15, by midnight, we'd already received in excess of four inches here in the city. By 2:00 AM, we were over six inches. There was nowhere for that water to go, nowhere.
Why?
Because the lake, which happens to be at our north shore, is 62 inches above data right now. We have water that is laying in our storm drains on this end of town, that's lying there, within three inches of the top right now.
So if the lake wasn't that high, Lee Avenue wouldn't have flooded that day?
I don't know whether Lee Avenue would have flooded that day. What I'm hearing is, we likely encountered a 1,000-year storm that. I haven't seen that yet, but there are those who deal with this that have shared that information with me. So I don't know what would have happened on Lee, but I can tell you that we had historic flooding that this city has not seen in a very, very long time, and in part, it's because ground saturation, lake level, and the sheer amount of water that fell out of the sky then.
It's not because the pipes are this big and they should be this big, bringing all that stuff down there?
Well, they very likely, the pipe size could be part of the issue, because you have an infrastructure, and you have a system that hasn't been touched in 40 years.
Right.
With the exception of very, very few projects. To replace the storm sewers in this city, it would take $40 million to fix everyone today. Boom, 20 to 40 million dollars to tackle that problem. I'd love to see us do that, I think the mayor would love to see us do that, and I don't think anyone in this room would love to see us build the infrastructure up to where it needs to be. But it's a bigger problem than just talking about it, we have to figure out how to do it in a responsible way for the citizens, for you, for all of us that live here and have invested our lives here, we have to figure out how to do that. How do you even know if we're divided at time? We're trying to figure out which bites we take first right now. I can tell you that in the seven and a half or eight months that I've been here, firstly every day has been spent trying to put together a plan. We have steps, and we're looking at it. I feel pretty confident that we've, we're well ahead of where we've been in the past year in doing that. Council has had presentations with regard to our sewer system and our distribution system. We're working on the streets to put that whole plan together, how do we make this happen? Will that keep streets from flooding? I think it will go a long way towards that. Is it going to stop it? No, because we can't control the weather. But we can do the best we can to be prepared for it, and work together with everyone that's part of this community to make it happen, and that's my pledge to you, I'll work with you.
That's all I'm asking.
I'm certain you've heard of it, I can't control anything they did.
No, I know you can't, but...
You know me, I don't know you, but I can assure you...
As a homeowner, I'm fed up with it.
I get it, I'd be ready to.
You know that I'm very familiar with what goes on on Main Street, as are all of us. I've been very impressed with this gentleman since he's been here, him and his wastewater team, all the water team, they're being very aggressive, just like he said, with trying to come up with long-term solutions, not just a near-term patch. That doesn't help you right now, I understand that, but just give him a chance to work with you directly, him and his team, and I'm sure more will be done than have been done in the past.
What did the mayor declare? Did he declare a state of emergency, a disaster, or what? What did he declare?
State of emergency, and that was so that we could initiate...
FEMA?
FEMA, we don't initiate FEMA, that's something that, a state of, a disaster would have had to have been declared on the state level. We, we declared the state of emergency so that we could keep people from going out driving, gawking, and causing floodwater to run back into people's homes.
So was it really a state of an emergency? Because that's why my insurance denied repairing my family room, because it was called a state of emergency, and that Ottawa County was seeking help. Okay, so I got denied on a family room that has to be gutted?
Well, does that have to do with this, in the declaration that we did, that your insurance company...
Well, because I, because they want an answer, because...
Then tell them to contact Ottawa County Emergency Management.
Well, that's what I, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking you for, that's the reason I brought the question up.
The mayor, no, what you brought up was, what did the mayor declare?
That's right.
We declared a state of emergency.
Because I wanted to be able to call him back.
The county commissioners also declared a state of emergency.
So it wasn't a state of emergency because of flooding?
Of course it was, that's why, that's why we declared it, but that doesn't, that does not put FEMA, their system in, into action, if you will. Okay, Ohio EMA had resident, had, had people here on the ground with Ottawa County EMA, with us, to assess everything that went on. It did not rise to a level, which is a terrible description, given that it was flooding, but it didn't rise to the, whatever the prerequisites are for it to have been recognized as that type of a disaster. It wasn't an emergency, absolutely.
Everybody looks at it differently. I mean, every, everybody, my, my insurance company, you look at it differently, FEMA looks at it differently. But the people that lost them, did any of you guys lose anything?
Mrs. Murphy, if I may, we found out the hard way, we had seven feet of water, we lost everything in our basement, furnace, hot water tank, electric panel, all my son's furniture, everything. And our insurance company wouldn't cover it, because what there is, is there's an addition to your policy called a storm sewer backup.
I have that.
You have that? That should be all you need, I didn't have that, I didn't know about it.
No, because they called it, declared it a state of an emergency.
I think you can, I think you can fight that, because that's the actual definition of it, so...
I have every coverage you could possibly have, except for I didn't have disaster insurance, okay? Because they told me not to buy disaster, because we don't believe, we don't live...
If you got the storm and drain backup insurance, that should be all you need.
I have everything.
I have every bit of it. I had a foot and a half of water in my basement, my buddy who just bought a brand-new house had almost four and a half feet on brand new furnace, not even 30 days old. I will tell you, as Mr. Martin has also explained, knowing where your pipes run is a really good thing you should know as a homeowner, making sure you have backflow prevention.
I do.
To stop any water coming in. That being said, if you do, you might want to have a plumber come in, independently of trying to work for you, and take a look at what you've got. I know where mine failed, I had backflow preventer, but mine failed because I was still running the shower, and the rest of the water in the house weighed down one of my drain pipes and broke it. So, that's where I got water. I did not get water from the city, which was completely flooded out, I had water all the way up to my steps on Sixth Street, I've lived in my house for 10 years, never seen it. So, that would be my suggestion to you, would be, seek a licensed plumber that can come in who's not trying to sell you something, not trying to work for you, but to do an actual evaluation, and see if that might help you in the future, along with working with Mr. Martin, and seeing if there's something on the city that they can work with you too.
And I did speak with a previous mayor as well, and Debbie, she told us, she told me that, just like Mr. Martin said, either do the $40 million restructure of the sewer, or you have to build up the entire city, you know, three, four feet in the air, which obviously that's not going to happen. So everything he's saying is exactly what I'm hearing. I mean, it didn't skip us, you know, I mean, I feel, exactly what you're saying, I'm just as frustrated. I think you have a fight that I didn't have, I think you can definitely go to your insurance company and fight that, so I hope you do, I hope you can.
And Mr. Murphy, I spoke to the county engineer also, and he said it was the most he's seen since he's been here too, and I also asked him about how things drain, and he said our system is set up, when there's something like that, the drain's within 24 hours, that's good, total drain. We had most of our streets cleared within 12 hours-ish, so he said that's above average, but the way the rain came in and everything, as heavy as it was, I mean, I know all the trouble, they had eight inches, you know, out by Curb and Lumber. They, I mean, for two days they were shut down, they've never, ever gotten water out there. Unfortunately, I got water in my basement, and I've had everything fixed in mine too, and we haven't gotten it for a while. Unfortunately, the way it came down, you know, everything, and I agree with both of them, know where your pipes are, you know, I'm lucky, you know, we do, because I had to replace mine about four, five years ago, so you know, whatever you're asking, stuff like that.
When you're saying know where your pipes are, what, what do you mean know where your pipes are?
Where are your sump pumps, where are you pumping that water to? Where are you discharging it?
So it doesn't come back into the house? So it doesn't come back in, to make sure it's going away from your property?
Well, isn't that the pipe that they ran through the yard out to the street?
If they did, it's illegal.
I mean...
You can't run a sump pump into a, into a storm.
Well, that was there when we moved, is that?
That's one of the things, well, you can't expect that if the street was flooded, that it's going to work, because it has nothing but pressure. So that's one, that's why we need to talk another time, and look at it, and figure out what you can do to fix that.
Well, I thought it did everything.
Mrs., I, I second what they've all said, to give Mr. Martin a chance to discuss it.
Sure.
On Lee Street that day as well, it was trash day, and a lot of the trash was clogging some of the drains as well, and I know some residents were getting it out, and it did help it go down a little bit faster once that was cleared out, some of that debris, I mean, it was just a terrible situation, compounded with the trash and the sump pumps going into the road, which, I mean, just all going into one system. But they did get the pond cleared out, they had rented a pump and got as much as they could do, you know, in that situation, but Mr. Martin is a wealth of information, and I would, I mean, I know it's frustrating even through three years, but schedules...
Well, I can tell you, he's gave the most intelligent answers that I've heard in a long time, I don't like them, but some of them.
The answer's not me, right? The answer's you, then why?
Right, right.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, if you have...
This is Murphy.
What?
I grew up on CN Road, as a child, I lost my life break at seven years old, I lost my mind, I was in fifth grade, I experienced flooding, I know how horrible it is. My business is on North Madison, that was the closest it's ever been to getting in the door, and we have that pump up there. It wasn't just in our community, I have many friends and family in Oak Harbor who experienced the same situation. It just was an incredible amount, and I understand your frustration.
No, I know.
I grew up on CN Road, we did, as a 10-year-old, I was filling sandbags, I get it, it's very frustrating, but I, I think the lake is the highest we've seen it in many years, and I think that plays a factor into it, and, you know, just the situation with the ground being so saturated, but I think, if you give Mr. Martin a chance, I think that you guys will be able to come up with something to try to help you. I've always loved Lee Avenue, I'm like, what? It's flooding, wow!
This is the third, this is the third time, this is the third time I had to gut my family room since it's been remodeled, what, five years ago? Down to the carpet, furniture, everything had to be pulled out of there, so.
I was there as a child, I got it.
That's why I'm frustrated, because I, I'm tired, I have tired of it, so that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
It was worth talking to you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
There's no other.
Oh, wait, does that pump on that pond automatically come on, or does somebody?
No, that's a holding pump. We went out there and pumped it specifically because it was not able to move water, move waters, there was nowhere for water to go, so we actually put a pump in to, to move the water.
Was this, isn't that pond supposed to pump into the bay?
It's not a matter of pumping. It's better than moving naturally flowing. They're just, you know, I can tell you, at the hospital, the hot, the flooding, the hospital spurs, they have a pump, it's pumping, it's going into a ditch, ditch is going out, the ditch is moving, water's 20 feet out on each side, circling back, it's recirculating. That's what happens, there's nowhere for the water to go. Once it gets out of these ditches, it's just ponding. So the little bit of circulation that does happen either naturally through the, through the movement of the water or the wind, it's circulating it back, there was nowhere for it to go. It's still a target it started to receive. So what did we do in that case? We put a pump down at that pond, at that, to try and move water out of there, because it's up so high, all it's doing is feeding itself, it's just recirculating, just like your bathtub, you know, once your bathtub starts to flow, gets to that level, you know, that water's just standing. That's what we experienced the other night. So that pump, the ideal was to move that water out of there, move it beyond there as much as we could to try and get some flow going, and as the waters were receding throughout the city, that started to help. We thought that we were going to have a nor'easter coming this weekend at 20 miles an hour sustained. On Friday, we had crews out making sure that this, what we've been doing for several, last several months, is working on the, uh, catch bases, making sure that we had any catch bases that were still in question, that we had issues with, that we addressed those, so that Friday, crews spent all day, Friday, gap-backing, working, cleaning out those so they were there, and we also put a pump, we pumped that pond dry, so that we knew that if we did get the winds and we had to move water, that it would hopefully help. Fortunately, we did the winds that we expected with that nor'easter, nor did we get rain, but we were prepared for it, and that's what we've been doing. We'll talk.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. We'll go to the auditors' report, Mr. Hickman. Nothing to say, Mr. President? Thank you. Treasurer's report, Mrs. Hanson.
I have my regular report for bed tax. People are coming to visit Fort Clinton, wet or dry. Um, we're to date, $29,177.85 for bed tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Law Director's report, Mr. Wilker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, Safety Service Director's report.
I just wanted to, uh, quick update with regard to 131 Madison. I've contacted, and I will be tomorrow, if, on behalf of the city, signing the papers for that, for the transfer, in hope of, uh, once we could get a check and everything, it will be signed tomorrow 1:00, and that should be finalized by the business department. The only other is that Fulton Street, uh, paving, uh, between Fifth and Sixth, we're meeting tomorrow to try and come up with a date for that to occur with the hospital. Just wondering, it could occur as early as next Monday, but we may have to move it out because of the holidays and the hospital, so we'll have a better idea in the morning than council. We'll make the announcement through social media, the other outlets, uh, it's all.
Thank you, sir. Moving to correspondence, council, you have the Emergency Services Committee meeting minutes on June 19th, 2018. Do I have a motion to accept the correspondence's statement?
I would like to accept the correspondence.
Thank you, Mrs. Sari, is there a second?
A whole second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hickman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Additionally, we also have a notice to legislative authority regarding a liquor permit transfer from the Island House to Jett's Bar and Garela of 102 Madison Street at the Island House for the first floor and the patio. Uh, council has a right to object to this transfer. Is there a motion by council to waive our right to object?
I will be, I will be for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Sari. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. All those in favor of waiving the right to object, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Clerk will take this up. I believe everybody already has copies of this as well. It will be on file with the clerk, depending on members of the public wishing to do it. Be nice to have another establishment who looked in there. Moving to correspondence, there's only one, I'm sorry, not correspondence, they already did that. Moving to ordinances and resolutions, there is only one ordinance, 1618. Mrs. Beverly, would you please read that by title and summary only, please?
Ordinance 16-18, and ordinance, amending ordinance number 9-18 of the City of Fort Clinton, adjusting accounts within the City of Fort Clinton.
Thank you, Mrs. Beverly. Council, any action on the ordinance 1618 this evening? Mrs., Mrs. Phillips?
I look to adopt this ordinance, order 1618.
Motion on the floor to adopt ordinance 1618, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Creedman, a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, will clerk, excuse me, will the clerk please call the roll on adopting ordinance 1618?
Gabe Hill?
Yes.
Phil Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Sam Pinkman?[1613.12]